Twenty twenty-five council meeting, ask for a roll call.
Counselor Dolman?
Here.
Counselor Fisher?
Here.
Counselor Hunter?
Here.
Counselor Nunley?
Here.
Counselor Carlson?
Here.
Counselor Gabrielle?
Here.
Counselor Graham?
Here.
Counselor Dowd?
Here.
Mayor Johnson?
Okay, would you all please stand for the pledge of allegiance with me? Mr. Dowd, would you mind leading us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I get into tonight's agenda approval, is there a motion for approval? Mr. Nunley?
Thank you, your arm, I make a motion to approve the agendas presented.
Second.
Motion is seconded, is there, move into, is there, all in favor of the motion signify by sitting aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? None? Going to get into tonight's consent agenda, there's four items on tonight's consent agenda, the council minutes for March third, twenty twenty-five. The award bid for sidewalk and curbing project ending July thirty-first, twenty twenty-six, this item considers awarding this contract to sand and construction. The third item is reject bids for chip seal projects ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, this item considers rejecting all bids received for this project and rebidding. The fourth item is American Red Cross Month proclamation, this item considers proclaiming March twenty-fifth as Red Cross Month. Is there any public comment on tonight's consent agenda? No public comment, look to the council for a motion.
Yeah, I move we adopt the consent agenda as published.
Second.
Motion seconded, any discussion on consent agenda? All in favor of the motion signify by sitting aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? I'm gonna go ahead and read the proclamation for the Red Cross Month, and it's lengthy, so bear with me. This March we celebrate American Red Cross Month by recognizing the compassionate acts of people in Kalispell and by renewing our commitment to lending a helping hand to our neighbors in need. Since Clara Barton founded the American Red Cross more than a hundred and forty years ago, generation after generation has stepped up to deliver relief and care across our country and around the world, bringing out the best of humanity in times of crisis. Advancing this noble mission, the volunteers, blood donors, and supporters who now give back through the Red Cross remain unwavering in their commitment to prevent and alleviate human suffering in the face of today's emergencies. Their voluntary and generous contributions shine a beacon of hope in people's darkest hours, whether it's driving, delivering shelter, food, and comfort during disasters, providing critical blood donations for hospital patients, supporting service members, veterans and their families, saving lives, and first aid, CPR, AED, and other skills, or delivering international aid and reconnecting loved ones separated by global crises. This work to uplift our community is truly made possible by those who selflessly answer the call to help whenever and wherever it's needed. We hereby recognize this month of March in honor of their remarkable service, and we ask everyone to join in their commitment to care for one another. Now therefore, I counsel, I counsel President of Kalispell, by virtue of the authority vested in me by the laws of Kalispell, Montana, of Kalispell and Montana, do hereby proclaim March twenty twenty-five as Red Cross Month. I encourage all citizens of Kalispell and Flathead County to reach out and support its humanitarian mission. Thank you. Going to move into tonight's committee reports, there are none, and move into tonight's public comment, I'm going to open up the mic for a public comment on any item that's not currently on tonight's agenda. If there's any public comment, step to the mic and state your name.
Hi, my name is Walter Roundtree, I'd like to start off by expressing my gratitude, perhaps again, I can't remember, for the Parkline Trail. That's been super successful, I see people on that all the time, and I'd encourage you to do more of that. Additionally, I'd like to speak briefly on the philosophy of governing. Idealism is rampant these days, both locally and nationally, in fact, it's so ubiquitous that I suppose it's not surprising that it bleeds over into our governing bodies, but I'd like you all to consider that governing is different than being an idealist. And when, I encourage you that when you get a gut feeling that there's a particular hill you should die on, especially if the, your advisors are telling you perhaps that that hill isn't on solid bedrock. I would encourage you to think whether you are pursuing an idealistic avenue, or if you are truly governing in the best interests of the people, so just please be thoughtful.
Any other public comment? Seeing none, I'm going to close tonight's public comment and get into tonight's reports, recommendations, and council action, there's two items this evening. Ordinance nineteen thirty-four is the second reading of Vista Ridge cottages zoning and planned unit development. This item considers zoning of RA-one residential apartment with a planned unit development overlay for ninety-six units on fifteen point seven eight acres of land at four eighty-nine, two mile drive. Second item tonight is Resolution six-two-four-six, Flathead Warming Center versus City of Kalispell settlement agreement. This resolution considers ratifying a settlement agreement authorizing the city manager to execute a mutual release, rescinding Resolution six-two-two-seven, and reinstating the conditional use permit granted to the Flathead Warming Center. Item number one, Mr. Russell.
Yeah, Council President, City Council, on the agenda tonight is the initial zoning for the planned unit development. This ordinance was considered in past eight to one at our last regular meeting, since it wasn't a unanimous vote, is back on the agenda for second reading as an action item. We're happy to present any information council may like on it, otherwise we'd recommend passage of this ordinance.
Okay. I'm gonna look to the council for a motion. Public comment?
Maybe I'll take staff questions, if there's any staff questions, then.
Any questions of staff on it, did you have any further questions on it? Okay, I'm gonna open it up for public comment. Any public comment on this item? Okay, seeing no, go ahead.
Yeah, Arthur Frathheim, D forty-ninth Street East, I was just curious, and there might not be, this might not be something anyone knows, but if there's an est, if there's an estimate of how many, it said ninety-six units, I think, how many of those are likely to go towards people who live here full-time versus how much is going to be like short-term vacation rental, or if that's just something, it's impossible to know at this point, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'm going to close public comment, look to the council for a motion. Ms. Gabriel?
Thank you, Mr. President, I would move ordinance number one nine three four and ordinance to amend.
Mike.
Thank you. I would move ordinance number one nine three four and ordinance to amend section two seven point zero two point zero one zero, official zoning map, City of Kalispell zoning ordinance, ordinance number one six seven seven, by creating a planned unit development overlay to be known as Vista Ridge cottages, PUD, over certain real property more particularly described as attractive land located in the southeast quarter of the northeast quarter and the southwest quarter of the northeast quarter of section twelve, Township twenty-eight north, Range twenty-two west, PMM Flathead County, Montana. And more particularly described as tract two of certificate of survey number two zero six nine zero, records of less Flathead County, Montana, containing one five point seven seven eight acres, more or less subject to and together with any easements, covenants, conditions, restrictions, or agreements of record or apparent in accordance with the Kalispell growth policy plan at twenty thirty-five, and to provide an effective date.
Motion seconded, any discussion? Mr. Hunter?
Thank you, Council President, yeah, I was one vote against this, the first reading, so I'll just reiterate that my concern here is that the development is, a lot of it is occurring within the hundred-year floodplain, and my concern is to get out of that restriction, they put fill on the floodplain, and that could have potential risks of others living within the watershed in instance of, of a flood occurring within the watershed, so I will not be supporting this again.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Counselor Dolman?
Aye.
Counselor Fisher?
Aye.
Counselor Hunter?
No.
Counselor Nunley?
Aye.
Counselor Carlson?
Aye.
Counselor Gabrielle?
Aye.
Counselor Dowd?
Aye.
Council President Graham?
Aye. Motion carries into tonight's second item, Resolution six-two-four-six, Mr. Russell?
Council President, members of the council, type for you is Resolution six-two-four-six, resolution ratifying the settlement agreement, the mutual release, and rescinding the Resolution six twenty twenty-seven, which did rescind the conditional use permit for the warming center. I've had questions from members of the council that voted in favor of rescinding this conditional use permit, and members that were opposed to rescinding the conditional use permit, both wanting to know what to speak tonight. The one thing I'd remind councils, we are in active litigation, we're in active litigation until this item is released by the courts, as such, I'd recommend we follow our policy of not commenting on litigation, but on the settlement agreement, which is in fact, basically a question of, are we better overall moving forward with the settlement agreement or not? And that's what is before council tonight, so with that, happy to answer any questions council may have.
Any questions for staff? Mr. Dowd?
Yeah, what is the, so what's the case sitting at right now, I mean, is it just waiting on our resolution, or is it, are we still waiting for it to it to be stopped or whatever? What's the status of the case?
Well, the mutual release will be submitted to the court, which if upon acceptance would stop, would end the court case, it would release all parties from any claim that's currently there. Otherwise, you know, it's still in process right now, it's just essentially waiting on this.
Sure, and my question, I guess, I, that's where I understood the case to be, but I wanted to know how soon after we would, let's say we passed the settlement agreement, how quickly does the court case stop in that case, in that instance?
That'd be dependent on the court, I don't know if, John, if you have a idea?
We've got all signatures, we'll get it submitted to the court, and then it's in the judge's hands.
Okay, so there's no timeline?
Up to the judge.
Okay, thanks.
The apology to Ms. Warren, is that read out tonight during deliberations, is that published in the newspaper, or is it?
So there were no terms related to, that apology was out, we have separated it out as a separate item, as exhibit C, which would be in line with the settlement agreement, if council would elect to do something more, that is up to council.
Thank you. Any further questions? Can I open this item up for public comment? Any public comment, please step to the mic and state your name and address.
Good evening, council, my name is Ray Young, I am the program manager for Flathead Warming Center. I'm not here tonight with any animosity, you guys have a super tough job, I know you do. Not everybody's going to be happy all the time, I believe the right thing is this settlement and moving forward, and just turning the page so we can all work together as a community to keep dealing with the homeless problem that we do have. I can say since we opened in November, we have served approximately two hundred and eighty-five individuals who have needed our help. Two hundred and eighty-five different people, quite a few same nights, but through and through, a vast majority are people who are from here and have lived here for some substantial amount of time. Starting in January, we started, we released our Community Connection Guide, and our Community Connection Guide had things in it like we have a, an email address and our phone number for a complaint line or, or contact line for anybody in the community. We have received one, one complaint since January, since we opened that, over littering issue, which we did go and pick up the items, and we're working to find out if it was someone from ours, and if it is somebody from ours, they will just not be able to stay there anymore. Another part of the Community Connection Guide was working with Kalispell Police Department, which at this, I would love to thank Chief Anizio and Captain Fetfite, who I have regular contact with, working together, and it's been working well, their officers are doing an amazing job. They've been very open and willing to work with us, and I think that is great. You know, neighbor relations was something that came up quite a bit before, and I would, I can say just from my part in this, what I've seen is our relations with our neighbors are growing in a very positive direction. I've talked to a lot of the business owners in the surrounding area more than once, even one who said, you know what, I was, who spoke against us and said I was, held a big grudge when this first all went down, but I realized maybe if I start communicating too, we can get better. And we've had a couple of conversations, some over fifteen, twenty minutes, where we were laughing, and I feel like that relationship is getting stronger. One of the biggest things we did is we started our community care team, the Flathead Warming Center Care Team, which is walking through the community, whether it be on Meridian, Liberty, Wyoming, with any guests who just wanted to volunteer, they don't get anything for doing it. We've been doing that twice a week, and I've been leading that up, and I've had anywhere from nine to eleven guests, a lot of times different guests, show up, come pick up trash, in fact, last week there, one of the days we were going to do it, I was feeling pretty under the weather and was going to cancel it, and the guests over there said, no. We saw a bunch of trash piled up against the fence over by Alberson and the fairgrounds, do you mind if we put the vests on and go down there and clean that up, and I think they only got like six bags of trash. I think that speaks to, we're always going to have a bad apple show up, and I think any place in town's always going to have that, but I think that really speaks to the, the core of, of a lot of the people that we serve, their community members, they want a clean community, they want a good community, they want to be a good neighbor. So I have nothing but love for the fact that, that we do have people like that, that have wanted to improve their life, we have a guest here tonight, and I'm not going to talk on her story, if she would like to, that would be great, but I've watched her go from being homeless to having a job, to buying a car, to just getting a place to live, and if she wants to speak on that, I'll let her talk on that. The biggest thing moving forward is just going to be the collaboration, and it was a good start with the police department, because sometimes we have to ask somebody to leave that's not a bad apple, it's just somebody whose mental health and their illness is so, much so, that we just don't have the capability to care for them and give them the kind of care that they need. And that's one of the things with Captain Fetfite, I've been in contact with, is some of our guests, whose mental health has declined so bad that they're, they're a danger to themselves more than anything, whether it's walking around in Timbala weather with no shirt on, you know, things like that, and working with them, and also trying to work with the hospital and bring them involved in the mental health services of, you know what, if we can all collaborate together and we can start getting some people involuntarily committed, because some of the people that are that ill don't even know they're ill, so they're not going to get help on their own. Like I said, we do have bad apples on smile, they don't last very long, we don't let them stay, we ask them to leave, most of them, when they come, they don't even want to stay for very long, any of them will come in, they'll eat, and they're like, I'm out of here, and then when they do come back, they usually end up exhibiting that same behavior when they're in the center and they're asked to leave, we take, we take the warming center very seriously, and we also know that the service that we provide, and so many people that want help out there, they're staying at the warming center, and I'll let Sean O'Neal, who's our resource manager, talk about the help that we've been able to give people this year, and some, we've had some really big successes here, and I'm excited to hear him talk on that. I thank you guys all for your time, thank you again, Chief Anizio, I appreciate your department and everything you guys do, I know you're on the front lines and you deal with the same people, day in and day out, and you guys do it very professionally. For the community members, there's going to be some that it doesn't matter what the facts are, they don't want us here, and that's, you know what, everybody has a right to their own opinion and their own beliefs and feelings. Anybody that does want to know the facts, that really wants to know, I'm not asking you to come volunteer, I'm saying just come in, sit down and talk to me, or Tanya, or Sean, we would be glad to answer any of your questions, give you a tour, and try to put your mind at ease of what we really do there, because we really are helping people. And, you know, the warming center's been around four or five seasons, we're still a very new, in the, in the grand scheme of things, we're still very new, so we're always looking at ways that we can not only improve our relationships, but expand the resources that we can offer people to help them to keep making the homeless population in Kalispell decrease, we've already started doing that this year, and I can't wait to keep doing it in the future, I'm humbled every single day to know that the group of people I get to be a part of, helping others, and I'm truly blessed, and I think this community is truly blessed with the warming center being there, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, he's pretty tall too, I would have figured, had that adjusted, hello, first off, Happy St. Patrick's Day, my name's Sean Patrick O'Neal, and I am now, now the resource manager at Flathead Warming Center. Today is a great day for many reasons, not just because it's a holiday to celebrate Irish culture, but also to celebrate a time where we're, we are able to move forward. Moving forward for the Flathead Warming Center, for the City of Kalispell, and most importantly, for our community. We have hope again, and with that hope, we can be reassured that some of our neighbors that fall on their hardest times will have a safe, warm place to get another chance to find their own hope. But, hope doesn't just come with shelter, food, a shower, and a bathroom, that's just survival and human dignity. Hope starts after someone can meet their basic needs, when they can find value in the future. We provide more than just dignity at the Flathead Warming Center, we foster hope. Hope comes after we help guests meet their basic needs, and then help them figure out a way out of their predicament, a way to a better situation. The Flathead Warming Center offers our guests access to resources, and requires participation in light case management through the Links and Roadmaps programs. Our hope is that each of our, or, our hope is that each day, that through our Links program, we can directly connect at least one guest to something that helps them better their situation immediately. We do this by bringing services directly into the shelter, services such as healthcare providers, vocational rehabilitation, even haircuts and more. With our Roadmaps program, we help guests figure out what they need, where they want to go, and then we work on a plan to get them there step by step. We offer advocacy and accountability by following up with the providers, property managers, law enforcement, and the guests themselves, and others involved with their, each individual's roadmap. We meet our guests where they are at, and we stand beside them as best we can to help lift themselves up. Many are so, so lost and broken that they can't help themselves anymore, or don't know where to go. We are a refuge where hope can be found again, where we are a lighthouse to those who are lost. And the proof is in the pudding, throughout this abbreviated shelter season, we have helped twenty-three Flathead Warming Center guests get into housing or treatment. This year, we set a goal for the last one hundred shelter nights of the season to support ten guests to get into one of those positive outcomes. With forty-five days, or sorry, forty-five nights of shelter left, we have already seen nine guests reach a positive outcome. Each warming season, we intend to be better than the previous, be a better shelter and service provider, be a better neighbor, be a better community member, and more, make no mistake, we are, we were already doing our best at these things, but believe that we can always do better, and we will.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neal.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council, my name is Rebecca Smith, I am one of the residents or the guests that stayed at the warming center. I came to them in December of twenty twenty-four, I was kicked out of the Samaritan House because, excuse me, I had very bad PTSD. I reacted to a couple of their fire alarms in a wrong way, and left their building too early in the morning, and therefore, they said I was no longer safe to be at the Samaritan House. The Flathead Warming Center was very gracious in allowing me to stay there the last, I think it's been about three or four months. In between that, in between the transition, I was a mess, I had a job, I did not want to lose my job, I didn't know where I was going to go, I had enough money to get a hotel room for a couple nights, that was about it. I called them, they said they had a bed available. Over the last four months, they have helped me to heal and grow in many ways that probably would not have happened if it wasn't for them. They all believed in me when I did not believe in myself, they gave me hope when I had lost hope. You may not know or may not be aware, before coming here, I was in the Lincoln County Jail for four and a half, almost five months, where I was very verbally abused by both inmate and officer alike. I had a protection order put on me because I did something to my father's property that I will not speak up tonight, therefore, when I went to the Flathead Warming Center, I had most of my legal stuff cleared up, but I had lost hope, because Samaritan was afraid of me, they didn't want anything to do with me, they said they were done with me. But they believed in me, like I said, and gave me hope, now, there were times where there were struggles, but my case manager, Britta, was always there, we met at least every week, or every two weeks, to discuss issues or anything, any problems that there were. And the others, I would go for walks in the park, or go to my church family to help me with. I would just hope that as you make this decision, you would search deep down and think very hard before you make this decision. hard before you make this decision. There's many folks over there in the warming center that are counting on you tonight to make a decision that may make or break their lives, as well as the Flathead staff that are wanting to help change these lives, but they need your support. They need you to back them up, they can't do this without you. So I pray that, and hope that you would believe in them so they can continue to believe in the others, so that they can find the housing and the hope that they need. I would like to share that I now have housing, I have a car, and I have a stable job, all because of the Flathead Warming Center decided to believe in me and gave me hope when I had lost hope. Everybody was scared of me and afraid of me, but they gave me a chance when nobody else would. Thank you.
Thank you.
So Jamie Quinn, 729 Sixth Avenue West, Kalispell. So I'm glad that we've had some sweet, I'm going to give you a little salty and a little sweet, but I don't think that's a surprise for any of you with me. I want to remind you that two former city mayors came here and told you not to do this. Did anybody listen? Nope. And instead, we proceeded with something that turned into absolutely nothing and a waste of time and money. Apparently, there were neighbors who put up surveillance cameras, right? To monitor the behavior that they came and talked about. None of them provide footage, none of it went to the police, there was no corroboration, right? But yet, they had security cameras. But you didn't ask for that proof, you didn't do anything, you just took word, just like this, in a way that is not legally binding, there's no oath, it's meaningless in the end of the day. I'd like to remind you that we're so fortunate that Tanya and the warming center have been so kind and decided to settle and move forward because they want this over and they just want to do their job. What was said about Tanya and the defamation against her was completely inappropriate. It's pretty hard when you're driving, when you're getting a call at night from a friend who's driving home at nine o'clock at night from the warming center, calling just to make sure they're on a phone with somebody because they're worried they're being followed, right? And the reality is, I'd like to say that I didn't believe that that was our community, but I couldn't tell her I didn't believe it wasn't. Did I think people might follow her or people might try to talk to her or accost her? Of course I did. So I was one of her friends to be there on a call while she was driving home to make sure she got home safe, because if something happened, how would she get help? There should not be a divisive community with a, with a shelter director like that within what we're doing here. There is such a divide between the city and the county and those that are most at risk in our community. The city has just continued to exacerbate that in a way that is completely and fundamentally inappropriate. This has been going on since I moved out here, the criminalization of poverty. I moved out here in November of 2017. I'm sure it probably predated me. And I'd like to remind you that as a city council, in September of 2019, we voted on some dumb stuff like Katie's Day because a tourist lost a dog here. Does anybody remember that? The nice times, right? With Katie's Day. Have we celebrated that since then? Was that a complete use of city council time? Yeah. But you know what happened five months later? In these very chambers was a former city councillor turned around and called homeless people rapists and pillagers. And this is where we wound up. What a surprise. It's not a surprise to me frankly, that the continuation of that narrative between our county and our city that is so unbelievably inappropriate and a waste of time and resources. We don't have clean drinking water in this city. That's your job. We don't have sidewalks everywhere. And you know what? When I walk home at night, I'm not afraid of somebody that's homeless when I'm walking home. You know how I walk home at night? With my flashlight on my phone, because the sidewalks, either they're not there or they're in such disrepair that I'm more worried about falling and hurting myself than encountering somebody on the street. But you didn't focus on what your basic job of city governance is, which is infrastructure, clean drinking water, but instead, let's focus it on the warming center. How unbelievably inappropriate that is. Now, here's where I'm going to come to a little bit of a sweet side. Back in October, I went down to the federal courthouse in Missoula. It was one of my favorite days frankly of 2014. But what I found that day was that, you know what? All of us that were there ran into each other and knew each other. And it was sad that we had to be down in Missoula to turn around and remember somewhat of the fact that we're a community. My rotary bag that I have with me today, I fill with snacks and drinks, we're all sharing that. I remember Doug shared gum with us at the end of the city council or at the end of the meeting. That's what the community is supposed to be about, is even in trials and tribulations that we come together and remember that we're people, right? That's what it is at the end of the day. But instead, we wound up here and I don't know how or why frankly. And I just hope that we can all move past this because homeless is, is not going away and we need places like the warming center to continue to provide part of the services that are necessary in our community. So I hope that the city really starts turning around and being a partner in a way that they haven't been, because it's been requested by the service providers. I've been in those meetings, I've been requesting this, even here in these meetings for seven years, requesting that we have a partnership. So I really hope that we can remember those little bits of being down in Missoula and sharing snacks and drinks and gum and come back to the fact that we're all people and we're all here to do what's best for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Quinn.
My name is Cassidy Kip. I live over at 820 Third Avenue East and I'm here, I just want, I've thought a lot about what I'm going to say today because frankly, it's been really emotional for a lot of people that are in this room. And ultimately, I can say that I see two different issues. One is the issue of homelessness, which I think that Jamie just spoke to pretty eloquently. And we've talked about solutions today in terms of what people are actually doing to address homelessness. And the other issue is about procedure and process and making sure that our city council is equipped with the information that is accurate and that is useful for you to make the decisions that you need to with our population and our public. It seems like we are sitting here right now because you were given information that we somehow had the right to revoke a conditional use permit and that's a made up process. And it was really easily vetted by people who looked at the legal standing and who looked at the way that we went about this process to say, hold on, red flags, this isn't adding up, the city didn't follow the rules, you didn't play by the rules, and you called my friend Tanya a liar in the process. You hurt people and you weren't given the right information to make meaningful decisions. And there were a lot of people who were sidelined in this process and there are people that are sitting up there next to you who you treated in a bully-like behavior. And I don't think it's acceptable, I really don't. I think that as leaders, we should have a mayor who's present here. I think this is a big conversation to have and that we've got a strong group of people with good integrity and great grace who stand here and talk about how they look forward to solving the problems that you have so ungracefully kicked down the street for years. I have been here a long time, you have all heard this, in 1988, I wrote in my journal, I was at Woodland Park today, there was somebody sleeping there. This isn't a new issue. Many of you up there are aware of this as well. It is neglectful and it is a poor use of taxpayer funding for you to not address it, because I tell you what, our response is a lot more expensive. It's a lot more expensive if we have to have emergency levies and emergency responders. So for a long time, we were able to separate out some of the ethics of how you have addressed social services, but now it seems like these lines have all just kind of crossed over. The procedures that you followed were incorrect and I hope that there's an internal review of that process, because at my work, if you have a third party who comes in and says, whoa, hold on a second, this is going to cost $140,000, potentially increase your insurance premiums, that's an issue. You have eroding public trust and I would hope that you have the grace and the integrity to look internally and reflect upon this process to see if you led the best way you know how. Because I know somebody in this room who did lead the best way they know how and that's Tanya. She's not sitting up there with you. So I hope in this process that you feel this, because we all do and we all had to. And I've been working homeless services since 2009 here and that gives me no more credit to speak on the issue other than the fact that this is not the first time you've heard it. It's happened over and over again. Please pay attention to what is put in front of you. Please look up the published materials regarding this case, including the injunction ruling. Those are all materials that are available for public review so that everyone can know where the standing is on this, because they should. We are taxpayers and this is a colossal waste of time and precious energy. Everybody's ticked.
Okay. Kenny Nelson, Liberty Street. Since I'm the one that started this a year ago, I just want to say that what has happened since January with the homing, the home and shelter, is what we asked for originally. Everything that we wanted them to do, they have now done, but they filed suit with the city to, before they would do anything. So in my opinion, they have cost the city $140,000, because what we asked them to do, they are now doing through this settlement. So had they done that in the beginning and not filed suit against, worked with the neighborhood, not filed suit against the city, we would not be putting out $140,000. And to this day, no one, including Tanya, other than exchange on a Facebook post, has ever come to me and asked me if there was a problem. Since I'm the one that started it, I'd have been, if I was Tanya, at my front door the next morning, figuring out what she could do to help and educating me if I was incorrect. But no conversation, I'd been banned from their Facebook page, I can't comment on anything. If you comment on something on another public post that is against the warming center, they come back at you. We are not, the neighborhood is not heartless, we just don't want the low barrier because that brings in the issues. The people we are having problems with are the people that the low barrier status is bringing in. I would be happy if they just didn't advertise it. I can go to Arizona, search on my mom's phone for low barrier services in Montana, Kalispell comes up. That's why we're attracting the transients, that's what we have a problem with. If we could get rid of the transients and help our local community, we don't have a problem with that as a neighborhood. I don't, I'm not happy that we are settling a suit that should have never happened to begin with, but I do understand it. It is the right thing to do. It is too bad that the warming center couldn't have worked with the neighborhood before filing suit on something, on a constitutional property right, which it should have never been to federal court, it should have been on the actual cut being rescinded, which the city had every right to do. The judge, I believe, was wrong in even taking the case as a constitutional property rights. So, that is my two cents and it would be nice if the warming center really did want to work with some of the neighborhood. Thank you. Oh, and by the way, I appreciate the city council and everything they do for us. There's a lot of people who are not here on a weekly basis like AAM and they don't know what's going on in our city, but they're the first here to bitch when they don't like something. So maybe they should come and set through some of the meetings. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tanya Horn and I'm the executive director of the Flathead Warming Center. And I have a prepared statement, because I want to go high. But it's very hard to hear what I just heard. Never once did that neighbor come and speak to me. That neighbor's way down Liberty Street, which I didn't even know what that house was. I wasn't a part of the petition that went around that we never saw. I mean, there's a lot of things, it's just not fair. And I really hope that I can extend my arm right now and tell you how I feel with my written statement and that hopefully, as I'm trying to turn the page, I want other people to turn that page with me. Very hard to hear that I don't care, because I've always cared. Good evening. This has been a long and difficult year for all of us, but tonight, we have an opportunity to turn the page. Thank you for being here. I know it's not easy to be here, it's not easy for me as well. May 13th, I stood right here and I said, quote, "Our perspective should not be viewed as being in opposition of our neighbors. We do not defend anyone who has engaged in criminal activity and we do not defend criminals, although we're being blamed for criminal activity." Because we're being blamed, my heart has to tell you that we're sorry, end quote. That was May 13th. The same is true today. My heart hurts. The question could be said, how could you be hurting right now? Didn't you win? As I stand here again tonight, my heart continues to hurt because no one is winning. Not the warming center, not the individuals who are struggling in homelessness, not the neighbors who came before you with complaints, not the city, nor is our entire community winning. No one is winning. The community was told that the warming center is doing something wrong. Our hearts hurt. Some of our neighbors believe that we should have agreed to their demands. Our hearts hurt. Some of the council also believe that we should have agreed to the neighbors' commands. Our hearts hurt. The warming center did not feel heard throughout this process. Our hearts hurt. Some of the neighbors did not feel heard by the warming center and still don't feel heard by the warming center. Our hearts hurt. We have heard the frustrations and fears about what it means to have a shelter in the neighborhood. To the neighbors, I understand that some of you do not feel heard by us. With that in mind, we will continue to work hard for you to see that we do care. Our invitation remains open. Come and see for yourself. Meet the people who come through our doors, talk to the volunteers and the staff who are dedic, who have dedicated their time to make sure that no one in Kalispell has to sleep in the cold. I'm confident that you will find, I, I'm confident that what you will find is not a source of danger or disruption, but a place of hope, accountability, and transformation, because that's what I find there every single day. We're open to dialogue and how we can do better. When you can't just come in and talk, you can log in on the website or you can call the hotline, 406-885-3042. If there's something that we can do to address the community's concerns, we will. And if it's not something that we're equipped to handle, we look forward to the community having a point of contact with the city. We all have an opportunity to turn the page. Turning the page is hope and grace and we all need that. We all have the opportunity to move forward, not in opposition, but together, to build a stronger, more compassionate Kalispell, one that helps everyone. As the leader of the Flatheads Warming Center, please hear what I have to say. We can do better. We can all do better. This is the path that I choose and I ask our staff, our volunteers, I ask our warming center guests, I ask the council, I ask the neighbors, and I ask our entire community to choose this same path with me. We don't walk this path alone. If you choose to walk with us, you'll be joining all the homeless service providers. And CAT, that's the crisis assistance team. And PATH, that's the projects for assistance in transition from homelessness. And our community's first responders. A special, a special shout out to Captain Fet Fite and the Kalispell police officers. And you'd be joining with dispatch and EMTs. And you'd be joining the community partners that provide their services inside the warming center, such as Greater Valley Health Center, vocational rehabilitation, counselors, and even haircuts by Tina, as well as other community partners. When we provide opportunities for the homeless community to rebuild their lives, all of our lives get better. It is only together that we all can win. It's only together that things can truly get better. Winter is almost over, but it will come again and we'll be here for those who need us. and we'll be here for those who need us. We can do better. We all can do better. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Horn.
Good evening, City Council. I'm gonna keep this really brief. Most of what's been said was things that I feel and was gonna share too, but I just, I wanted to thank you all for your service. I wanted to reiterate that although we all have different opinions on this, that you guys all have the best interest of the City of Kalispell in mind. And I also want to point out that we all agree that this settlement is the best thing for the City of Kalispell, even neighbors that have shared. And so, I'd also, at one point, one of the City Council meetings was asked by Mayor Johnson if I learned anything through this process. And I most definitely have, like Tanya shared. I most definitely have learned a lot, and I feel like we can grow and become better through this. I think all of us have learned something, that we can be better, just like Tanya shared. And so, let's turn the page. And I think it's been a long year. It's been a hard year, and we're ready for something new. I think we all are. And so, yeah, I'm really looking forward to just moving on. And I thank you guys all for all that you do.
Thank you, Mr. Heffernan. Further public comment? Okay, I'm gonna close public comment on that item. And look to the council for a motion. Mr. Nunley?
Thank you, President Graham. I think a motion that we accept Resolution Number 6246, a resolution ratifying the statement agreement between the Flathead Warming Center and the City of Kalispell, authorizing the city manager to execute the mutual release, rescinding Resolution 6227, reinstating the conditional use permit granted to the Flathead Warming Center and declaring an effective date.
Second. Second by Ms. Carlson. Would you like to speak to it, or?
I would. So, long ago, I was one that made the original motion to have him go in. And it's been a rough year, I will agree. And thank you, Tanya, and Luke, and everybody for this. And I'm listening to some of the comments here today, and I think that on both sides, we can make some good progress forward. And I trust that. So, I'm happy to support this.
I think, I'm gonna jump in real quick, because, you know, I agree in everything. I was the one that brought this up. Cannot believe it was a year ago. It's been a long year. It has been a long year. And I'm very heartened, heartened by hearing the comments I've heard tonight. I agree with them. You know, "Let's turn the page" is a very powerful statement. It's a very powerful comment. There's a lot of emotion in the room. There always has been on this, and I understand why. And, you know, I look at this as, like what Mr. Young, his comments, you know, talking, I was very encouraged by what I was hearing from him. And I'm just gonna say, communication is key out there. I've said that at the very beginning, when we first brought this up, four years ago, five years, four years ago. And I think that with time, with communication, with the outreach that was mentioned, that the communication is gonna happen out there, that's gonna be fostered by that. Over time, relationships are gonna get built out in the community, as you were saying, has already been starting to happen. I'm really encouraged with that. So, given that time springs on us, they're about, you're about done with the end of this season, gonna be moving into summer, I think it's a really good time for a reset, where can find firm ground and move in, go through the, go through the summer, and then get into the next season. And, you know, to me, this is a very easy decision. Obviously, I'm gonna support it. It's a very easy decision. And I just wanna, the last thing I want to say is just, I want to wish the Warming Center and their operations, their volunteers, I want to, I've always wanted to wish you well. I want to wish you well and success. I want to wish the neighborhood well. I want them to have success. Because when there's not on both sides, we all lose. So, I want us all to win, and there's gonna be challenges and stuff, and I think that everybody realizes that. But I'm very hopeful that with this in mind, there is the opportunity for a good reset in the months to come. And I'm gonna support it. I'm 100% in support of this, so. Any other discussion?
Mr. Hunter?
Yeah, thank you, Council President. A few things. One, you know, I'll start by saying this settlement is the best outcome for a poor decision by this council. Restoring the conditional use permit is the right thing to do for this life-saving service. Apologizing to Ms. Horn, who was not treated fairly, in my opinion, is the right thing to do. The settlement brings to an end this whole wasteful ordeal that has distracted us from focusing on the real potential solutions to what are very serious problems in our community. And now that this failed approach to the problem is hopefully and thankfully over, let us move forward by committing the city to more meaningful collaboration with our nonprofit partners and affected residents in identifying positive solutions to address the housing and homelessness crisis in our community. I do think it's important that we hear what the apology to Ms. Horn is, so I'm going to read it out. In my opinion, it's not comprehensive enough, but it reads, quote, "The conditional use permit rescission process and litigation has resulted in various accusations, some of which have unfairly landed on the Warming Center's executive director, Tanya Horn. The city does not believe Ms. Horn committed perjury or lied in the Warming Center's conditional use permit application process. The city apologizes to Ms. Horn," end quote. I do want to respond to you just a little bit on what I heard in public comment as well. I appreciate those comments. Agree with a lot of it. But I, there has been a narrative that I've been hearing, that if the Warming Center had just done these things before, the permit never would have been rescinded. The Warming Center will formalize, as part of this process, measures that it has always practiced since it opened, with the one addition of opening their board meetings quarterly to hear any public complaints or concerns. So they're formalizing it, maybe they're reinvigorating it, they're distributing the responsibilities from Ms. Horn to maybe some additional staff, but they are not doing anything new than what they were doing before all this started, other than those board, opening up those board meetings. And if you think they are, you were not paying attention during the public comments and this whole process. Low barrier, I think, is one of the things that's great about the Warming Center, that we need in our community. And we heard from somebody tonight, whose life was turned around because Warming Center is low barrier, and accepted her from another homeless shelter and turned her life around. So thank you for being low barrier, and having that compassion, and working with people to turn their lives around. And there was comment about the demands from the neighbors. We, as a council, we didn't see, though, when there was a lot of talk about that meeting that got canceled, and it was said that the Warming Center refused to participate, which wasn't quite accurate, but that, we, as a council, we didn't see the demands that were being placed, that were being asked of the Warming Center. That didn't come out until the injunction ruling. Those demands were wildly unrealistic. Hiring a police force to police the neighborhood, that the Warming Center should pay for that, hire that, that they should be responsible for getting the postal office hours up and opened, like they have any responsibility for that, that they should change the way they take their clients in and have, you know, just totally change their operation and who they are and what they do. It was wildly unrealistic. And when you read those demands from the neighbors, it becomes a lot more understandable why the Warming Center said, "Wait a minute, we can't go into a meeting with this kind of being the basis of the discussions." So, if you haven't read those demands, because it didn't come to us as council, I recommend you do. And that's all I have. I'm gonna support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter. Other comment? Mr. Dowd?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to address the public, and I can't speak for the rest of the council, but we got to where I wanted to be after the settlement agreement. All I was looking for is the community to work together, and I think we're starting to see that a little bit in the neighborhood and the Warming Center. I hope that those avenues of communication can stay open, and that we can continue to improve. And that's the hope that we had all along, you know, or I did. I can't, like I said, I can't speak for the rest of the council. I am heartened by the brief dialogue that they've had since January. I think there's been a big turn since January, and not only with what the Warming Center is doing, but also community-wide. And I'm heartened by that. So, I'll be supporting this. I appreciate everybody that was involved. I appreciate the patience of the council up here. It's not easy to come here, week after week, and get demoralized, you know. It's, sometimes we have people that like what we do, and a lot of times, we don't. I know that the Warming Center and the neighborhood as well has felt that same feedback and the same friction, and I hope we can get over that at this point. So, I'll be supporting this, and I appreciate everybody that is involved, both the neighbors and the Warming Center, the council, our city staff who's been caught in the middle of all of this. And I just hope that we can continue moving forward in a positive manner. Thanks.
Roll call.
Counselor Dolman?
Aye.
Counselor Fisher?
Aye.
Counselor Hunter?
Aye.
Counselor Nunley?
Aye.
Counselor Carlson?
Aye.
Counselor Gabriel?
Aye.
Counselor Dowd?
Aye.
Council President Graham?
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Gonna go ahead and close tonight's reports, recommendations, and move into city manager, council, and mayor reports.
Council President, members of the council, we are now getting ready to enter into budget season. So a couple things on calendars. May 6th and 7th will be our budget work sessions. But as you know, we hold those budget activities ongoing, and we'll have multiple of those throughout the year. One of the things we'd mentioned would be brought forward was code enforcement and potential program and revisions. I anticipate that would occur over maybe a series of meetings, potentially, depending on how the first one would go, but we are looking at that at next Monday's work session. We also are updating impact fees for fire and police. It's that time, actually, last year was, it was hit and ready for review, but then we passed the levy, so that shifted and changed a lot of the capital within there. So our committee's getting ready to set up a meeting and review those impact fees for police and fire. Those should likely come back before council prior to the next budget in August. They won't be there for the May session yet, but they are coming up. And that's all I have. President?
Anything from the council? Mr. Dowd?
Thank you, Mr. President. We are moving into the final days of our legislative session. There's a lot of things going on that could affect the city. The one thing that comes to mind right now, that I couldn't really stay quiet about, is there's yet another bill that is trying to move the city council elections in the same year as the partisan elections. And I understand that it would be cost-effective to do that, but the city elections get completely drowned out by the partisan elections above us, and it's really hard to campaign for a nonpartisan city council position during that time. That's why we have an off-year. It brings more attention to the city matters, and, you know, contact your local legislator. Let them, let them know if you feel like that's a good idea or a bad idea. In my mind, it's a terrible idea, just because I've been involved with the city elections. I understand how rare it is that we get a decent turnout in a city election. And that's because we only get that little bit of a turnout for city issues because we're able, during that off-year, to bring city issues to the forefront. And if we can't do that, because it's getting completely drowned out by national politics, it's gonna be pretty interesting what happens up here. I think you're gonna find a more partisan city council, which is terrible, right? We're trying to just be representatives of our wards and of the City of Kalispell without, you know, we all have our principles, but we don't, we're not running as, you know, one of the parties. And I think that keeps us out of some trouble with, you know, issues such as that we just talked about, which seems to have devolved over time into a political realm where it's a community issue, it's not a political issue, right? So, please contact your legislators if you feel like this is important to you, and let them know that, I wish I had the bill number. I don't have it off the top of my head, but it would, you'll find the makeup of the city council and the fight during the year to change drastically away from a community center to a more political-centric idealism that we don't really want in city council. Thanks.
Anything else? Ms. Gabriel?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have a question. I had a constituent question. This gentleman rides his bike every morning on the bike path, on the park line, rain, snow, whatever, he rides. And almost every morning, he almost runs over people that are on the path, and he's wondering and leaving trash, who should he call if he runs across that?
I'd say start off with the Parks Department, but it may, depending on what exactly he's finding, it may be diverted somewhere else.
Okay. Thank you.
Nobody else? All right, I have nothing from Mayor Johnson, so we are adjourned.